This conference will now be recorded.
Brandon Jones had some things to discuss with the Compass Point. I told him he'd come speak first so we can get back to work. So you're up, you're first up, so.
When we started the project, we've been talking to Josh quite a bit and on the comprehensive plan. And it gave me the city was proposing to, what the nation was to waive permit fees and and reduce utility connections. Done or not? So that's a, it's a ton of money out there and lumber prices going up the way they are, it needs to be appreciated.
Josh, when that thing was taken, that wasn't seven, eight years ago on that, what Brandon's talking about, that report?
Yes.
Yeah, 2013. And at that time, we were just talking about, you know, looking at things, you know, but I know things have changed, you know, from 2013 what they are right now, but I just want to sum up a few things, you know. You know, we did that revitalization, that 10-year tax abatement for 90% up $250,000. We did that starting in the first year. So we're trying to jumpstart, you know, building to take place in our city where the city's putting a little more of the skin in the game. And out there at Compass Point, I know that, you know, we had a over a million dollar utility, you know, infrastructure that we had to pay for, which we got half of it through a grant. And of course, we, the other half, you know, being employer Creekstone, you know, needed housing stuff. So we thought we might foresee give that to whoever's going to develop that, you know, where they didn't have to put that on their, you know, their costs and stuff. So right now, you know, I think the city's done, you know, I'm just talking out loud for myself. The city's done a lot, you know, to try to promote, you know, housing. And I really appreciate what you're doing because, you know, you know, we need people like you to jumpstart this thing because, but we haven't had that in a long time because the city's never, you know, put any, you know, skin in the game, you know, like revitalization of 19, you know, up to $250,000, which is going to help you immensely out there. So maybe.
That's not a dumb deal. That's not a dumb deal.
What do you mean?
Now you've been saying for 10 years.
What do you mean it's not a dumb deal?
I need the praiser next week. They're not sure it's going to work.
Do you have any input on that, Josh, or?
Yes, it will work out there. They're, what they're going through right now is trying to figure out how, how to make that process work as far as the city.
Yeah, it will work because I mean, it's, you're in a city order. So no wonder that umbrella, you know, it's going to work for you. So.
Yes. And going back is all that was done for some other guy who didn't develop that.
Sure.
I think you did. So we're starting fresh late.
Yeah.
So I proposed something and I'm building it.
Right.
So now we're the rubber meets road. You have a recommendation that one put in place.
Well, it may be something that we need to go back and look at because, you know, 2013, whenever it was proposed, you know, we really hadn't done anything from that point on. It was just, you know, talk and stuff. And maybe it's something we need to look at down the road and, you know, and take another look at it, you know, but.
Would this have been feasible had we not waived those special assessments? I mean, that would have, I mean, we waived those special assessments, yes, before you took ownership of it, but if we hadn't waived them at all and they're still in place, it probably wouldn't have been feasible. I mean, maybe it would have been, but it would have been four or 500,000 more dollars out of your pocket. So I mean, yeah, we did waive it for someone else, but we, we're not putting them back in place. I mean, we just waived.
Just going off the paperwork I have. This is a recommendation that the city for development. And I'm developing, I'm, I'm going. So now I'm asking the city just to follow through with what your recommendation is. That's all I'm asking.
Good.
Is, is, this isn't something I'm dreaming up. This is paperwork I have from the city saying, hey, we want to get development into town. Well, you've got a local guy doing it. So I'm not, I'm not, you know. So putting tax on like that in our city. So.
Well, I think it's something, I know we know our city manager's not here today, but, but I think it's, it's something that we probably ought to look at, you know, because like I said, it's been several years, eight years, whatever it is, since we've, you know, and lots changed from that point to where we're at right now. But we have, but the city has made some major steps into trying to promote, you know, development such as yourself, you know, to encourage people to build, you know. And I think this, this tax abatement thing is going to be huge, you know, and we need to build, you know, of course, the city's biggest expense is infrastructure, you know, getting the water and sewer where those casings are at. And I think we, we've got a lot of properties, you know, that's got that already on, you know, those properties. We need to, you know, have people like self or other developers, you know, to, you know, to start building. But building is a, is a big issue right now because Creekstone are big in Campack are looking for, I mean, people's, you know, looking for jobs for their employment. So.
I found Scott today. Out at the country club, that was an established development. I built a lot of houses out there. I am now bringing up out there. That was an established development. All I did is go in and just.
But the problem, but the thing was, we started that myself and 10 other people started that way back when. But we had, but our problem was we had that infrastructure, you know, that sewer and the water that's over a million dollars that it took, you know, just got paid off just a few years ago. So that's one reason why that thing jumped start, you know, right now. People didn't want to pay the specials. And that's what we were in that limbo for, you know, quite some time, you know. So understand what, I understand that.
So what, what is in that document that he's talking about? I don't have mine.
Well, it's a, it was a part of the, what is it? Goals and actions of what a possible, the comprehensive plan with ideas or thoughts on how you could revitalize or get development. Basically, the wheels going for development in this community. There wasn't like, it wasn't a.
No set.
Have to do this for it. It was just consider, identify vacant lots was one. Consider instead of creating, which is he talking, which is what Mr. Jones is talking about. Consider participation in the neighborhood stabilization program. Consider program for housing rehabilitation. Work with civic organizations such as Habitat for Humanity to clean up and repair residents or lots. So it was a plan, which these would be things we could possibly do to make it happen, you know, which we are doing the neighborhood revitalization program now. We've obviously waived the special assessments of that area, which that wasn't even really one of the things.
In there.
In this document from 2013.
Did it want anything in there about any of the permits or anything permit fees?
Well, it just says, consider instead of for creating infill development of residential lots or encourage rehabilitation of dwelling units, such as building permit fees could be refund, reduction, demolition by city at no cost, or refunds or reductions for water or sewer connection fees.
That's infill development. Is that what that says?
Infill.
Okay. I checked on infill development and it was for urban areas that are vacant and downtown. Is what I thought, what I read into that definition of infill development. I don't think that, I don't think that fits in up there at Compass Point, that there's no vacant lots other than it's all vacant. There's no other structures out there. That's what I thought infill development is, is on when you brought that up. So. Josh, is that what that infill development actually means? Is that where this is?
Lots in the city that for whatever reason got torn down.
Yeah. That's what that is. So that's not new development, right? That they're developed, that definition?
On a broad, grand scheme of things, I mean, infill in our city is infill in our city, you know. So if you want to start picking areas, you could, I could have asked for help out there at Country Club because I was infilling already an area. So it's an established neighborhood. I'm infilling that neighborhood.
I think, me speaking out loud here, it's going to be hard. You had people like Mr. Larry, Mr. Fuentes, who developed lots of projects from 2013 through basically 2020 that had multiple, and they got no things. And this was technically a considered thing and they didn't get any of it. So are we going to say, oh yeah, we, here give, I mean, I think it's a playing. But yeah, and they got no incentive. And I mean, you've got that special assessment waived and I don't know if that would have been a, if those special assessments were in place, it was hundreds of thousands of dollars and hook or paying for the water and roads, would that have deterred anyone from even developing it? I would say probably would have. That's three or $400,000 out of somebody's pocket to pay for those. And that was part of a problem I think out at Country Club was this special assessments.
Yeah, it was, it was, you know, 10, 15 years ago, we got that.
Did they ask for it though? Because that's a big question.
Well, I think we need to keep things on a level playing field. And you, they did not ask for anything, but they also didn't get $400,000 in special assessment fees waived.
Well, that had nothing to do with me. That was the previous owner. You waited for the previous owner, not me.
I understand, but well, but what I'm saying is the special assessments were in place, you wouldn't have probably developed them with that $400,000 on top of it sitting there.
I would have. There's 100% I would have because I want to invest in the city. I want to build these developments. So if you're going to try to pick my brain, I'm telling you, I would have.
So. I just know it's, the level playing field will not be level if we start nitpicking who gets it and who doesn't. Because if someone's going to build two houses, they could come and say, we want it waived. And someone said, I'm going to build four houses in the next three years. I want mine waived. All right. Well, then I'm going to build six houses. Well, if you don't waive it for, I mean, I think it just, I'm concerned with what it's going to do is I think we're just, this will start the ball where we just have no, none of these fees. I know you're developing.
I'm just saying that it's, that it's still in development. So if you're going to build one or two, that's not a development.
But considering on this, you're still developing residential lots. I mean, yes, you're not developing 50-plus units like you're doing, but you're still developing lots, whether it's in Country Club or out by Crestwood, or those seem to be the two areas where their housing development's growing. So. But I don't know. I just don't know if it's going to keep things on a level playing field. That's my, me speaking, that is my concern is, I just don't know if it's, we're going to get down that ball where it's going to start, people are going to start wanting their stuff waived.
Well, you may create development. See what I mean? I mean, that's the whole process of this. Are you afraid of getting people in here to develop? Is that what you're afraid of? I mean, because that's what you're saying is you're afraid that so many come in here and ask for the same thing. Well, by golly, they're putting money in this town. Maybe they should get it. So this is what development is, is you're helping us develop our city, which should make your jobs easier. So I guess I'm not concerned about later on down the field. I'm worried about right now. I'm asking for me, I can't talk about this point or anybody else. I didn't ask for it. Shame on them. That's not on me. So I'm talking about developments, me personally, right now. So, because I'm building. So all I'm asking is if you follow through with what's in this consideration that was done eight years ago.
Well, I think we need to take another look at it because things change. And, and I think that, that, you know, that, like I said, you know, we're desperate, we need housing. I mean, we're, you know, employment's, you know, they're, they want to expand and, and we don't have the housing to do that. So we're looking at every option we can, you know. So I think we need to be, you know, I think we need to bring it back up and take another look at it. It's been eight years and, and we really hadn't followed anything, but we had made some changes, you know, here recently, you know, on the revitalization of the 10-year thing, you know. And then also the compass point where you're building that, you know, we let those, you know, let those, have those utilities go because foresee it, you know, because we want to jumpstart this thing for, you know, for the employments that needs to be, you know, housed. So, but I think we need to look, we need to take another look at it.
Let me ask a question here. You, we have here on this, this thing that got from 2003, 2005 Compass Point Drive. Is that one duplex?
Yeah.
And you want, the city is requiring a meter for each side of the house, the duplex? Or is that your plan? A meter, a water meter? Install five-eighths meter. That's a water meter and sewer service.
What's your question?
Is that for, that's for each side of the duplex?
Yes.
Is that, is that your plan or is that the city's plan that goes on each side of duplex?
I have one per year.
And one.
You have a meter for your house. You don't share your neighbors, right? You have your personal.
And then this gets me to another question. Are you selling these houses?
Yep.
You're renting them?
Yep.
Okay. I always wonder.
Brandon, if you, or, if you give me just a second, I want to ask, Jennifer, where do these fees go? What, what, they go into the? The meter sets. The permits go to the general. Okay. And so each one of these highlighted areas is a charge, right? So I wasn't here in 2013, so you're going to have to bear with me for a second. The construction permit fee is $90. Is that right, Mike? Okay. So each of your, each side of your townhouse gets a $90 fee. Is that right?
No, it's more than that.
I mean, for this one section, construction permit fee, $90 and then total trades permit fee, 75. Install a five-eighth inch meter, 850. New sewer service, 200. NRP, whatever that is, $25. So $1,240 per side because each one of those are separate, right? And you're doing 53.
Well, they're right at one house.
The concrete is slabbed. It's been out there too.
So we're doing 52.
No, we're doing 53.
Plus that one.
Plus that one's 54.
So Mike, for these standard fees, where are we getting these numbers from? How do we?
These are the standard fees that we charge.
Okay.
Residential, it's a low fee. Commercial, it's a little bit higher.
So I'm, commercial is not what this is, right? This is residential.
This is the art.
Okay. And so. So we're installing the sewer line, which is already there, right? And the water line, which is already there?
Water line, I can't.
Water is already there.
That's what we weighed that special.
And so those are gone. Those fees are not being charged, right?
It's just the connection fee to the water sewer.
Meter fee.
It's a meter.
But that's not what you're asking to be waived, right?
Yes, it is.
He's wanting the fee.
He's wanting it all to be waived, the $65,000.
I pay for whatever material, absolutely.
So the meter you'd pay for.
Yep.
And the sewer tap?
Well, the thing, the plan about sewer tap, they basically just set stuff in front of my plumber and then my plumber does all the taps, sewers. But on the sewer tap too, we have got that in half.
It used to be 500, wasn't it? And I think these are still cheaper than.
For everybody. It's kind of happened.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's not something we're doing specifically for. Okay. And so he's not asking, he's saying if it's a material cost, he'll pay for it. He's just asking paper costs to be eliminated.
Is that right?
Yep. I mean, whatever.
Extracan permit, total trade, trade fees permit?
So but isn't my permit based on square footage or on what we're going to state in your? So it's not the $90. It's whatever the calculation property.
No, the $90 is what the calculation for 50,000 dollars.
Well, I still think we need to look into it because it's been eight years and, and things have changed. And so therefore, I, you know, I can't, I don't think neither one of us can give a, you know, conclusion for you today, but I'm saying that when our city manager gets back, we need to probably have a workstation and start looking at this thing again. Josh, on this discussion, how this thing start with? I mean, who, who all, you know, was the commission involved in that? I mean, I can't remember from one day to day, let alone eight years ago. I mean, how'd that thing work back then? Do we have people that?
Yeah, that was the comprehensive plan, the document. That's it. Committee back in 2012, I think it started up, getting to the planning commission and eventually it came before the city.
Okay. But if, to do this again, we would have to follow the same procedures. I mean. Well, maybe what you need to do is, is visit with Josh and, and those meetings, we wouldn't know whether he could be coming up.
Planning commission is going through.
Okay. Maybe what you need to do is get with the planning commission. Okay. Okay. I'm not trying to pull the wool over your eyes.
All I just wanted to hear.
Sure. Mm-hmm. And you, and you've got some good thoughts about it too. I mean, and like I said, that, you know, we're, we're in a different situation. We're eight years ago and it's really, we need to start.
Two years ago, we're in a different situation.
Yeah, exactly right. And we thank you for what you're doing, I'm telling you, because it's taken, you know, we haven't had this kind of billing, you know, in 40 years. So, but, but we still.
Much excitement about building.
That's right.
Forty years.
I'm glad your heart's here too.
Okay. Thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you. Discuss it. I'll make sure Josh, myself, or someone let you know about the next work session. So you're not, not aware of it. So. Thanks. All right. We will do the budget. And is there anyone that has in a time crunch for the external agencies? Since we guys, you made you wait 20 minutes there. If not, I'll just go down the list. Chamber of Commerce, and then we'll do city, county, health. City, county, health. There you go. Josh is ahead of me. Or not Josh, Andrew, whoever it is. I'm going off of whatever this is, the budget, the template.
Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to stand before you once again and to present continuing funding request for fiscal 2022 for the City County, County Health Department. During the months most recently passed, I think it's been emphasized to the community more than ever in its 75 years, the importance of public health and what the health department does. During the, during the last year, we certainly hope that the Board of Health, the staff members and I have performed to the expectations that you would have for an organization like ours.
Been busy, haven't you?
It's been a little bit. And as Mr. Ross would say earlier, it is nice to see everyone's face. During the, my tenure as public health officer and administrator, I've always sought to provide the best public health services to our community at the lowest possible expense to local taxpayers. And I'm proud we've been able to do that. That is why we are not seeking any type of an increase for 2022. We are just looking to continue with level funding as we have for the last five years. 17,200 dollars signifies that. The strains on budgets that would have occurred last year were mitigated greatly by the fact that we did receive some CARES funding through the state, local offices to the county. They've put us in a really pretty sound financial position as far as, you know, all of the additional expenses that we would have incurred had those not been, had those funds not been provided. We would have been able to weather it, but it would have been very, very difficult. And so that's where we are, you know. Last year, 2020 was, is going to go down in history as the year that we took fight literally to the streets. You know, as far as some of the services we were providing in, you know, in parking lots and so forth. But it's what we do. We hope that the communities can take pride in the services that the health department provides. And there are, there is information in the annual report that I also attached in your packets. You can look at that at your leisure. Anytime any of you have any questions, I would welcome your call or an email. If you have any questions at me this afternoon, I would answer that before I give the left turn to the next person.
Well, I want to thank you for what you've done. I mean, you know, I didn't realize how powerful you are, you know, especially with that, you know, we had and so forth. But I know you've, you know, you've, I know you've had sleepless nights and worried about this and that, but I thank you for what you've done. And you've done a wonderful job and, and saved probably hundreds of lives, you know, what the way we, you know, the way you handled it, you know, through our community and stuff, or county.
We have a lot, we have a lot to do still. One of the things, personally, I've never tried to be, as a person that diminishes any individual's rights or perspective. My job is not that. My job, well, does have a great deal of authority attached to it. It's not for me to come out there and force you to do something. It is to basically explain why, provide the facts, and hopefully get people to agree to do what is best. But not everybody is going to do that, which we already know. And we don't expect that to change, but we do see, we do see great progress, especially in pandemic response today. A year ago, you know, it was all just a year. A year ago, we couldn't buy toilet paper. That's crazy to think about. And how far we've come in 12 months. But we know that there's still a lot ahead for us. And we don't know what the end of the year is going to require. We're now evolving into a new phase of being able to provide, you know, teens and adolescents vaccinations. And every day, it's just an evolving, an evolving state with this. We know that it's never going to go away. We can manage it and that we can get back to, to lives that everybody expects to live with the freedoms that they've all come to enjoy, including being able to see each other smile. So that's where we're at. And I appreciate, I appreciate everybody's cooperation. You know, it's not, it wasn't, it was not me. It was.
But we had to have a leader, so.
Thanks, Tom. Thank you for everything.
Anytime you need anything from the health department, just let me know.
Thanks. Thank you.
That's not a fast one.
Try it.
Can't you be Kelly second or Kelly third? Why you gotta be Kelly first? Thank you for your time today. And I got the number to the brief, so I'll try to do that. So.
Not I.
Not I.
You guys know I can talk.
Yeah. So just, just a few things today. Then I really want to show you kind of what we did on your, the building for you guys. But just continued the same, that $45,000 request we've had for several years. That really primarily goes into just our general operations with the city, wind build in Cowee County. And then we get about $35,000 roughly from our business part of the take of our operating funds. And then as part of our budget, we do have our revolving loan fund. We do our training classes. That's kind of what makes up our primary budget. But I mean, it's really, pretty quickly, the outcomes that, that Kelly groups really are still, you know, true to the same workforce retention, housing, contact with the community. So the document, the highlights is really where we're putting emphasis on for 2021 again. With all the funding. It's kind of trying to figure out how to get that back to normal and some of those. So just some really big highlights. Our CDDG CV grants, we do still have money in that. We still have about 40, 45,000. So if you know of a small business that's needing some help that was impacted by COVID, definitely send them my way. I have till July to get that out. And if I can't get it out, it goes back to the state. So definitely don't want to see that happen. So any businesses with less than 50 employees. So. Ark City, we funded its construction. Oh, we all have been funded here in our city. I know there's. So I mean, it's all kinds. We've got daycare centers that we're doing. So I mean, it can be a sole proprietor to. So I mean, it's all kinds. We've got daycare centers that we're doing. So I mean, it can be a sole proprietor to bigger businesses as well. So we've got that. Continue with our B R E visits, working with lots of businesses and lots of expansions, workforce definitely. We're going to start getting some of our classes back online for businesses, entrepreneurs, that kind of stuff. So we're getting ready to get our first supervisor class that we haven't had for a long time on my calendars. And we're going to be first to have a college on the president's house. Now that they've got their new workforce center now with Jenny. So she's a great partner. So hopefully that will help with some of those classes as well. Youth development, our programs that were pretty well on hold all like year last year, trying to work with the school to see how we can get some of that back. Expo, our industry tours, kind of see what twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school calendar is going to look like and what we can get that spell. And then building inventory, which is what I was about to say. New news that we're getting going right now, development of a teach tool. So our entrepreneur entrepreneurship. So through our e-community program that we have our love fund, utilizing that program structure to put together a team throughout the county that can really help and concentrate specifically on entrepreneurship development. What can we be doing? What are some ideas? So really putting together some strategies, a vision for what we want to see for entrepreneurial goods in the community. So we'll work with our Network Kansas Regional rep. And so just kicking that off, I sent my first invites out just a couple of days ago, actually. So. Rural opportunities up. We've been working for many years to be included in that. And with S B forty-seven that the governor is signing, Cali County will be included as a county with less than forty-five thousand population. So should hopefully be on the agenda for the county commission on Tuesday to get Cali County officially in so we can start promoting that.
And what do you mean by promote head?
So so as a Ross County, then individuals that move to Cali County from out of state will be eligible for income tax waiver for five years. And individuals that move to Cali County from anywhere with student loan requirements can get sponsored by their company or if we put together a pool of funds for student loan reimbursement. So they'd be eligible for up to fifteen thousand reimbursement, local half matched by the state of half. So they've had the program for several years, but this year they kind of changed. And we were really pushing pretty hard on this one while I have several times at the legislative level. So we can help improve people, especially whether it's the doctors and the teachers is where this one has been really popular with our companies, for engineers, ones that you know are going to have that to get them to live here. So that'll be something pretty, pretty neat. They extended it for two more years. And there's all kinds of ideas and changes they want to make to the program. So that'll be a really good, good marketing. So a lot of the businesses are really excited to be able to add that to their their toolbox for the employees. Our workforce, we're in the middle of doing a workforce study. So we're consulting with Next Move Group. And on June fourteenth, they're going to be doing some presentations of all the study of what it is we're lacking, what is our worst look like, how do we overcome some of these challenges that workforce moving forward. So we're helping us develop some strategies and goals to work on. So anybody is welcome to attend that on June fourteenth because it's open discussion. So anybody that wants to just kind of hear where we're at and what we're going to be doing going forward to address. And I've got some little invites if anybody wants one that has that information for you. And the buildings insights, I think Len was here last year, we're telling you we're going to start building and promoting with the development, the entrepreneurship, everything we've been talking about in our downtowns, especially about identifying and getting a really good comprehensive idea of what we have available in the communities. So for the commercial industrial buildings, we've been gathering complete information. So you'll kind of see here in a minute when I start showing you what we've got, that what it takes. Could you click on the link? Or location, which you have a link right there to show you what the lowest location one information system is our, it's a national database. So it's, this is what's embedded into my website, but it's a national. If you go to locationone.com, you can search any, any buildings in the country pretty much. So for these buildings, and just click on any one of them. So this is the information that's on the website. When somebody is looking for a site or when somebody requires about what's available, I send them this. They can pull up their flyers. They can pull up Esri is demographic data. So they can have a good idea of what the community is, what's around the community, what your housing incomes are like, so all the demographic information that's tied with it. And they can do this for any of the buildings, which is why it's so important to have complete information. But I'm just going to get you an idea of what, where this information ultimately goes to. And then that's when we can start really thinking, what are the good bits of the buildings? So we've got twenty-nine buildings on our list right now from our city. Eighteen of those are now on Lois. We have six of those that we don't have information. So they kind of, they look like they're vacant, but we're trying to find info. So maybe you guys. Three, the building owners have opted out. They do not want it marketed. And two, that we've got, we're just kind of waiting for more information. We know who we're just not getting. Twenty-six other of those buildings we have followed up on, they've sold, they're leased. So our whole list actually has fifty-five buildings in our city.
Fifty-three wood art, Megan? Go ahead.
It's just total. So they bought, they sold. So the other twenty-six are already taken.
Okay.
So we've got twenty-nine more that we could get.
All right. Just like the easy office building, is that on that list or not? Okay.
So kind of just an idea to go through what ones we have real quick. One twenty-five West Fifth, we've got square footage, we've got dollar amounts, we've got pictures. So it's active and listed.
I think that was sold.
Did it sell recently?
I think.
Well, that's good.
That's what I heard. You're talking about the, the, the. Yeah, it sold last week.
The antique wall building, I know there's conversations on that, but we still keep listing it to our. The Gordmans, all of the information on that.
There's sales up in there anymore.
They wrote three twelve, three fourteen, they're being sold as a pair. Investment property, I believe that one has a business in it. So it's for sale just for a new owner.
McDonald's.
Five twenty-one. And if I remember this one, he really, really, really wants this to be another bar type relaxing kind of place. He'll work it really good. But he'd be open for anything. But we've got that building over on A, six oh nine West Madison. Fifteen oh seven, so that's a small Fredo building up north. And the buildings, these couple are for the spaces that are behind, over by Taco Bell behind where it stands at. Walgreens, that's going to be two and a half million dollars for that building. Get you the door. The old porcelain location that's up north has been vacant for quite some time. Five dollars a square foot, so that's pretty hefty. But they are willing to subdivide. So if we get anything like that, then we can tell them about that. Again, the bowling alley, another investment property since it's already occupied. Twenty-five eighteen, War Summit up uphill. And then the old, the car lot up north. So those are the ones that we've got the information and have listed. And so so then these are the buildings that we're looking for more information or if anybody have anything. So the three eight South Summit, and some of these, like, you can tell they're whip it. So when we're just driving around, I kind of find these buildings that it's like, obviously something needs to be done, but who, who is it or how?
Audience participation. Does anybody know anything?
Yeah, if we know the status of this building. Because that's our thing. Your downtowns are so important. But if you've got buildings that are just dilapidating and just sitting there, then that's not going to do anybody any good. Three eighteen South Summit, there's a number, but nobody answered. So we keep calling, but nothing. Three twenty-four South Summit. Three twenty-six South Summit. Dale Casey's building. Does anybody know? Are they?
Roped off.
They're all roped off and everything. But what are their intentions with that building? To just let it sit? Or if anybody has contact? Seven to one, we had that one listed for a while, but the lease line's gone, but it doesn't look like much is going. So we're not trying that one. So then this building, they don't want us to market it. So that's down at four eleven. Four fifteen, they don't want to listen to either. And four nineteen.
Are those all one owners, those buildings, same owner?
And there's that building. We've got email. We can try to contact, but just are not getting any response because that building would be really, really, have cold potential. But so that kind of shows you the ones that we're looking on at what we're doing to try to get those going. And now kind of with a lot of that, we're really comfortable with what we've got now is to start developing that marketing promotions and how we get these put together some flyers or just what we can start doing to get these marketed to get some people in these buildings. So.
I didn't see, did I see the old Country March brochure store on your list?
It is on the list. Then I skipped over that one pretty quick.
Okay. I was hoping it was.
Information for that one, too. Yep, it's listed.
And it's hard to get response from owners.
Yeah, and that's the hard part. And that's why it's kind of that vague. When you see the buildings, it's just, there's reason some of these just sit looking like they do because they don't want it marketed, or they don't utilize the building and it just sits there. And they just won't return calls and emails. And so, but on any of those others, if you have any other information on who we need to be targeting, then we can definitely do that and get it listed. So. But pretty, I'm pretty happy with the buildings that we do have. We have a lot of information. The state of Kansas has done a lot to promote. So Lois used to be through our state professional organization, K E D A, Kansas Economic Development Alliance. So now with the new leadership, Commerce has really taken that over, that subscription and really started promoting that as a state outside, too. So if you're get, just get everything on Lois and get it out there. So that's what I wanted to really concentrate, just kind of show you guys what we're working on.
On the economic development, we have a lot of downtown buildings that only the bottom four is being utilized. And we've talked about some of it here in on the commission, some of us have, I believe, about getting development for them to fix those up. Now, the League of Kansas Municipalities has a program. Do they still have that program? Or is that, is that through the state? That program, I think it is, because they just tell us about it.
They tell you about all the fun things.
Yeah.
So probably, well, what just also something that just passed in legislation is R H I Ds, so the rural housing incentive districts. So they just now approved the legislation that the program, which is through bonds, can now be used for second story renovation for housing. So we are just now getting information out on that. So and that's really a lot of good timing to find out this. So identifying which of those buildings downtown that that would work for and have really good opportunity for second story housing.
And all those owners get notified when this comes up? Is that correct? Or do they have to ask for it?
I will definitely make sure they find out.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, they won't just get notified. So it'll be something that when we get, get the specifics, the details, what's, because you know, if it's bonds, how does that work and which type and and the process for that. So. Yeah, that was a really good addition to that program. They're really excited about it.
Sounds good. Any questions? Thanks, Carrie. Thank you.
I need one of those invitations.
Mindy's online, right?
Yep, I'm here. Is my screen showing?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. All right. So thank you, commissioners, for letting me present virtually again this year. I really appreciate that. We just opened the building up to the public last Monday. We're preparing for summer reading. We're short a full-time position. So I really appreciate being able to multitask as I attend this work session. And so, and I also like to get to talk about one of my favorite topics, which is the library. I enjoy sharing our stories, our statistics, advocating for our relevance. And I like voicing our concerns and listening to any that you guys might have. So I appreciate this platform every year. We are requesting the full six mills that were allowed by current charter ordinance. So we're not asking for more. I mean, we can't ask for more, but we certainly probably couldn't take less. And my presentation is just kind of going to be about me going over our crazy year that we had, what we've done, our finances and some of the concerns that we have kind of moving forward. Hopefully I can. There we go. Okay. So I always like to start my presentations with our mission. It kind of just clarifies our role in the community and what we do. We provide a lot of free and open access to a broad range of materials and services, as I'm sure you know. We work with lots of public and nonprofit agencies in the community which have similar or compatible goals with us. We participate in community events. And in addition to our collection materials that we lend, we provide public programming and lots of different low-cost services like printing, copying, faxing, scanning. A new thing that we offered last year and this year is lamination. We also offer a free notary public. So lots of stuff that we do. And then just wanted to share, we do have, we have our same domain, but we created a couple of different link trees to access some of, so people could access our information. It's just a way that patrons could quickly navigate to the resources that they need. But there's also a link to our full website and our Facebook and everything like that still. And then I guess to delve right into our statistics that we had for last year. Nothing in this really surprised us. It was pretty expected for the most part. We expected the increases and decreases where we saw them. Honestly, the only thing that surprised us was our adult programming, which increased twenty-six percent. And I think that kind of told us something about our programming in that area in general. I think probably teens and adults are probably more likely and able to attend something virtually or pick something up from the library, take it home and do it in their own time. So even though there were lots of things that was not ideal during the pandemic for us, there were lots of kind of eye-opening things. You know, everyone had to adapt and try to think of how to survive and go forward. And some of those things are probably services that will continue in the future. So. One thing was we were really surprised. A lot of people never asked really for computers. And we kind of always thought, well, that's our big draw is being able to have people come in and use computers. But we rarely had anyone call or ask or need a computer. The main services that we provided to people last year were printing, copying, faxing, scanning, those kinds of things. So that was something that was a little surprising for us. And then just a little bit about our timeline of how things kind of transpired last year. March sixteen was when we closed the facility. Down to June first is when we opened up for curbside. July twenty-second, we opened for computer use. We did shut that down in November, I think, when the numbers were getting really high. And then just this last couple of weeks, Monday, May third, we opened up the facility to the public. So. And just to clarify on a few of those things, there was a lot of debate about whether or not providing curbside services meant that you were open or closed. The state actually considered a library closed if you were closed to the public. But if you asked any librarian in the state or the entire nation, they would disagree with that because you know, yeah, the facility was closed, but we had staff on site. The majority of our services were being offered to the community. We had transactions that were constantly being made every day. So. So that sounds like open to us. I always like to make the comparison to restaurants. If someone would have said, oh, you can't go to Taco Bell because you can't eat inside. I'd have been like, well, you can go through the drive-through and get the food. This is not the whole purpose of a restaurant. So you just couldn't come inside, but you could get almost every service that we provide through curbside or at the door. We were helping people at the door. So we didn't really do anything that like other libraries weren't doing. We didn't go rogue. You know, when the pandemics pandemic started, we had, it was very complicated because you ran into the situation where. You had the White House and the feds passing the buck to states and then counties and then municipalities and then down to health departments. And so it left libraries and I'm sure lots of other businesses kind of in a little pickle because on one hand, it was really great. Because you had this local control. You could think about community size and your local rates of infection when you were considering what kinds of services you wanted to offer. And you can determine all of that based on your specific needs, but on the other hand, it kind of had a negative impact because. It meant everyone was doing something differently. So it caused a lot of confusion. Because you were always being compared to what another library is doing or what another state's doing. So it kind of became this like double-edged sword. It, we kind of felt like it was the opposite of its original intention. You had, everyone wanted local control. So that you could make decisions for yourselves, but then you had lots of people that were like, wait, we don't like how you're doing it. So it was kind of frustrating, but I guess. Our simple answer to why we took a more cautious approach to reopening was mostly to protect our staff. When libraries were one of the first entities the governor listed as ready to open. It really made the library world angry because no one was consulted. And I think it was reflective of the fact that no one knows what happens in a public library on a day-to-day basis. I think the assumption was you come into a library, you get a book, you check out and you leave. And if only we lived in that ideal world, that would have been awesome. And we would have opened, but that's not what happens in the day-to-day library. So, you know, we were listed as essential and opening, but we were not prioritized for vaccine immunization. So our big thing was we just wanted to make sure staff was able to get vaccinated. Once they finally were, we opened the doors. So that was the, the short explanation as to why we took the route that we did. And we were really blessed because we didn't have hardly anyone complain, at least to our face. And at least I know, at least on Facebook or anything, we were really lucky, I think. But we actually had lots of people that were appreciative that we were still even offering services. So, so we were very happy with how everything turned out. And so, just a little about what we had been up to, like I said, most people don't understand what happens in the library day-to-day anyway. So, a lot of the stuff that we do, even in not when we're in a pandemic, it's stuff that you don't see. And I think sometimes it's like, if people don't see what you're doing, they kind of assume that you're not doing anything. So. Anyway, so. Some of the stuff that we had been doing, it took a lot of prep work to move between those various stages of opening. We had to figure out programming, like we were shifting to other formats. We've never provided programming virtually. And we had to put holes in our orders through vendors. We had operational changes because at the beginning of the pandemic. Everyone was, had to shut down. So we were having problems. Most of our stuff comes through UPS and FedEx and they are not easy to work with. So we had to cancel a bunch of our stuff. We, we were trying to push out marketing. We were working on staff training. Our library system that we use, they came up with new features like curbside. They gave us three different options. We had to figure out how to use what we wanted. We had to make changes in our circulation rules. We got rid of overdue fines. We extended due dates. And then we had some procedural changes like. The curbside, you know, figuring out how do we do it? And then what are we going to do when we're quarantining materials? So all of that takes time to plan and it's behind-the-scenes kinds of stuff that you just don't see. But that takes up a bunch of time. And then just some of these things that we did, a lot of these numbers are from mid-March to the end of December, just specifically pandemic statistics. But we continue to provide lots of programs. We fielded lots of reference questions still. You'll see one hundred and ninety-nine in-house references. That means that we, those are people that we help in person. So we weren't hiding away inside. We were actually helping people. Those curbside appointments and services, those are people picking up their books and people that were helping at the door. We continued to collaborate with lots of local entities. There were a couple of new ones that even started. The Early Literacy Initiative with USD four seventy, which has kept us pretty busy. And then the nonprofit leadership group that Yasmin Wood kind of started from legacy. So participated in new things, continued participating in other, in things that we've normally participate in. We provided new services and collections. We worked on a lot of different projects. We continued with professional development opportunities. I probably attended more professional development last year than I ever do in a normal year because it was so easy to just connect online. And you know, it's hit or miss sometimes on those virtual things. Sometimes they're not great, the feedback and people not muting or unmuting. It can be a mess, but sometimes you can get some really great ones. We navigated some of the CARES funding. I felt like that deserved a place on the list because it wasn't fun. And we continued with our building maintenance because even though we weren't open to people coming inside. Doesn't go away. You still have to take care of things. So. Anyway, those are just some of the things that kept us busy last year. And then kind of to get into the finances. I usually don't go into a lot of detail about this when I do these budget presentations with you guys every year. I just kind of give you that budget sheet and hope you can figure it out. I kind of felt for the sake of transparency and clarification that I would delve into this a little more so that maybe you had a little bit more of an understanding. I actually did this with our board too because I, I feel like, and this probably happens to a lot of people. You get into a situation where in your brain, you know how it works, but sometimes you're not always communicating that as clearly as you should to other people. So they completely understand it. So anyway. Ninety, eighty-six percent of our money comes from the tax receipts. That is our full six mils and the additional taxes that we are. Allowed to receive. Nine percent comes from our sickles grant and aid funding. Sickles is the South Central Kansas Library System. It is our regional system. That grant and aid funding. Is money that kind of partially compensates public libraries that are a part of sickles for services that they provide to non-residents. So people who live without, outside of their public tax district. Which for us is outside of the city limits. That money partially compensates the money that we provide to those people. Or the services that we provide to those people. Three percent from fine fees and donations. Two percent last year came from miscellaneous income, which was extremely, extremely rare. And usually that's point zero 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 percent of our income, but we received CARES funding. And then we also received a large chunk back from SCAN, which is the South Central Kansas Automated Network. It was kind of this consortium within sickles for libraries that had the same library system, which was Polaris for us. Polaris increased their prices so much that no one could afford it. So we had to look for other, another vendor. But in the years that we had Polaris and we were part of that SCAN consortium, we paid this like deposit fee. Knowing that if we ever left Polaris and went to another system, there would be some pretty hefty data migration fees. And there were. So we received pretty much that deposit money back. So we had a lot of extra money that we would never normally receive in a regular year. And then of course, our huge one percent we received from the state, which is about thirty-four hundred, I think. And then spending the money. So, and most of these are self-explanatory and I really won't go into detail. You can read. But I did want to point out that sixty-one point seven percent of the money we have and we spend go to personnel. That's wages, capers, taxes, health insurance. We center our library's value around library staff. Because without them, services we provide won't be possible. So sixty-two percent might sound pretty high. I think that's probably pretty normal for any business or organization. But honestly, we're actually underpaid compared to other librarians. In the state of similar size. And that's public information. You can go on the state library's website. To be able to qualify for our state funding from the state, we have to, we have to send in a report every year, which is this is compilation of our statistics. So every library has all of their statistics and it's all reported on the state website. So that's how we know we're underpaid. And just recently, the board agreed to make our minimum wage for part-time staff eight dollars an hour, which honestly is nothing. But so, you know, sixty-two percent might sound like a lot, but it's, it's not actually enough, but we have to settle for what we can, we make do, so. And then I just wanted to kind of single out some of these other expenses we have because I think that sometimes. People might look at these and think, oh my God, what could you possibly spend thirteen thousand dollars a year on computers and software for? So just things like that. Our software is expensive. We pay thousands for userful, which runs our public access computers. And that's, we have to have that software so that patrons can actually log into their, get access using their library cards. So that has to tie into our library system. Polaris, Apollo, that is our actual library system. That's never been cheap. We always paid five thousand a year for Polaris. We paid eight thousand last year for Apollo, but a lot of that was because of the data migration fees we had to pay. Beanstack is another software that we have to pay for. It's like a reading track. Software. So like for summer reading or if we have a winter reading program. Patrons can log in, create an account, log in and they can track their reading progress. But you know, there's like lots of other things. I'm sure, you know, most of you are familiar with businesses and things like that that you have to pay for. We pay for cloud storage, time clock software. We have Adobe Creative, Creative Suite, Office Software, our website domain and theme. We have ten public computing stations, three circulation computers, three staff computers, two makerspace computers. And we have a catalog station and all of those run on a rotation schedule for replacement every three or four years. So sometimes thirteen thousand is kind of not enough. I mean, luckily we make that work because we get a lot of grants through sickles. But basically just the rest of those, if you're thinking, God, that seems like a lot of money. We pay a lot of money for lots of different services. Our pest service, our HVAC maintenance, elevator maintenance, copier agreement, copier lease, postage meter lease. We pay for a hefty fee for audits and our accounting service. So, and like in our building and grounds, we budget really high for that because sometimes it's not about what we know we've got to pay for. It's about what unexpected costs might pop up. The roof is leaking, the window's leaking. We just paid a thousand dollars to replace a water heater. It seems to be a theme of water, which really is horrible with books around here. But yeah, so, and then just real quick, I wanted to talk about the eleven point three percent that we transferred to capital improvements last year. It was about a little over forty-nine thousand. That is absolutely extremely rare for us to be able to transfer over that much. I think if you have the budget sheet in front of you, you can see twenty nineteen, we've transferred four percent and twenty eighteen, it was point zero one percent. So it's very rare that we do that, but it doesn't take really a soft rock, a rocket scientist to kind of figure out why. I mean, we were in a pandemic, so we were trying to be really careful. But like just as more clarification as to why, I mean, we, we received lots of extra income we weren't expecting, more money in tax receipts. More money for sickles we hadn't expected. We had that miscellaneous income that I talked about that we didn't expect, but we received. We spent a lot less in a lot of lines. I mean, we spent fifteen thousand less on our physical collection. Because we weren't ordering physical items. People weren't really borrowing the physical items. So lots of places we saved, lots of places that we ended up spending more in. But that was kind of why we kind of have this, or at least I do. I like to be pretty fiscally responsible. I don't want, I want to be a good steward of taxpayer money. So we weren't going to spend money just to spend it. Twenty twenty was crazy, so we were being cautious. And honestly, I don't feel bad about creating a little bit bigger nest egg. Because like I said, it's for those unexpected costs. I mean, a few years ago, we spent thirty-four thousand on a roof. Thank goodness we had money in capital improvement because our, our regular operating budget doesn't always pay for things like that. And plus, we are looking for a new library facility in the future. So even more reason to create that little nest egg. And I might just mention too that, as a side note, every year we continue to see costs rise. So years ago, our staff used to be included in the city's health insurance plan. Now we pay for that on our own. We were told to hire a custodian or a handyman to help with routine maintenance issues because the city workers were busy. And I'm not throwing shade on that because the city workers are absolutely awesome. Tony, anytime I need something, they will come over here and either try to help or they will like give me advice on what to do because I usually don't know what I'm doing. So not at all. It's just an example of an extra expense that we've incurred. We, the city used to pay for our audit. Now we have to pay for that on our own. And then as technology improves and new products and services are being created, we seriously was paying more for that. Like for example, last year we installed two ring doorbells. Well, if we want to save the footage for that, we have to pay. We have to pay storage fees, cloud storage fees. It's like everything you do, you turn around and you've got to pay more money for something. And then of course, maintenance continues to be kind of an issue in our building, but that's the name of the game when you're in a one hundred-six-year-old building. I kind of leave me two concerns for the future and I promise I'm almost done. And we have concerns with, for building issues. Our facility doesn't accommodate a modern library's needs. It was not built when computers and wifi existed. We renovated this facility in seventy-nine and eighty to accommodate the needs of a library forty years ago. I'm forty-one years old. And I know I never grew up with computers or wifi, so. Some of it's the concrete in the building, running wires can be an issue. Some of it's the high shelving units that we use, which blocks, kind of hinders our wifi signals. Most lot, modern libraries use low shelving. We have a lack of physical space that kind of hinders our ability to offer more people, more services. A few years ago, we were bringing in hundreds of kids for programs. During the summertime, but turns out the fire marshal doesn't like it when you exceed capacity. So out of safety, we definitely had to scale down on the type of programming we were able to do. And so that's kind of a bummer for us because we know we could do so much more. And then we have maintenance issues. So like I said, old building, more costs. And then another thing is just funding to support services and staff. So we have underpaid staff, like I, like I mentioned. And we were really lucky last year that we got extra money in tax receipts. I don't know if we can always depend on that. And so when your income kind of is like stagnant and you're trying to consider, you're giving staff raises. But your, your income's not getting any bigger, but your expenses keep increasing. You have to start thinking about scary things like cutting services and stuff like that. And that's not a good scenario that we want to be forced into. And then we kind of have this lack of quality programming. We can't bring in exhibits like Winfield Public Library does. Because they have square footage requirements. Sometimes they tell us you can't put them next to windows and if you've been in our building, windows is all we got. So we can't bring in speakers. We don't have the room. We can't bring in authors for author signings or anything like that. Our space just does not accommodate anything like that. So sometimes it's the cost, sometimes it's the lack of space. So definitely our facility doesn't accommodate a modern library's needs. Certainly isn't accommodating ours right now. We make do. We're surviving and I think we're doing fine, but I think in the future, it's something that we definitely have to consider. And so I am done, but I wanted to just kind of share with you real quick before I take any questions. If you haven't seen some of the pictures of the construction of our facility on Facebook yet. I was going to share just a few of those right now. And I also kind of wanted it to be as a reminder of how old our facility is. So this is the Jim Open Theater. It's, it was on the site where our building is now. And this is them clearing the land. This was November eleven nineteen fourteen. They were doing some foundation work. It costs seventy-five thousand dollars to build the building. If only things were that cheap still. If only things were that cheap still. And some more. This was in December of nineteen fourteen. And April of nineteen fifteen. I just thought these were amazing pictures. Who would have thought to take progression pictures of this construction? That's the north side of the building and then the south side of the building, the main entrance, so. Pretty interesting. We had a gentleman a few years ago donate these pictures to us. His father was the previous postmaster of the building, so we were really appreciative to get that. All right. Are there any questions?
I don't believe so.
Oh, I do. Sorry. Okay. So when you said, first of all, I wish you had come in. It's much easier if you're here. But you said at some point in your presentation that you're not, that your expenses are going up, but you're not getting any more money. Well, you're getting six mils and that six mil value has gone up several times. Correct? So you are getting more money to work with.
I don't have my budget sheet in front of me, but now the past few years, except for last year, which was a total surprise, an extra twenty-two thousand, we've kind of been around that three hundred fifty thousand mark. I mean, give or take a few thousand dollars, which a few thousand dollars is nothing.
But Jennifer, can you help us out with any of the numbers?
So as our, I don't have her exact numbers, but as our valuations go up, the value of a mil goes up.
Correct.
The value of six mils would be more, higher our valuation.
I can't read.
How much does a mil go up a year?
It just depends. So we're expecting a good valuation increase, but tax appeals affect that.
And then so, Manny, what you're saying is if you have any kind of a reduction in that six mil, you're going to lose the thirty-four hundred dollars from the state, right?
Well, we lose the thirty-four hundred, and Canyon, I know you've asked this before in previous years. It's not about thirty-four hundred dollars. It's about almost fifty thousand dollars that we could possibly lose in funding. Fifty thousand is what I'm saying is way more detrimental to our budget. That few thousand, the thirty-four hundred is nothing compared to fifty thousand. So losing a mil devastates our budget, especially when I explained earlier that our staff is underpaid. We actually don't have enough money to get to where we need to be.
What do you have in your building fund right now? You said you had transferred forty-five thousand.
I have to get to that. Let me see.
Okay.
And I think you guys should have those budget sheets. I sent those to Jennifer. So just as an example, though, I mean, it says our tax receipts in twenty eighteen was three forty-seven. In twenty nineteen, it was three fifty-five. I think if I went back further in those other years, twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen, it was still around that three hundred forty, three hundred fifty. So that's what I mean by kind of stagnant. And that's really not much of an increase in our capital improvement right now. Right now, we have three hundred twenty thousand.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I have for Ryan.
Jay, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Dwayne doesn't. I think that's it, Mindy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm not stretching for my presentation. It's going to be entertaining. Am I next?
I believe you are.
I hope so.
Okay. First of all, I want to say thank you for allowing me to present on behalf of the Arc City Area Chamber of Commerce. Happy to be here. And I just want to give you guys, this is, this is our mission, to build a strong community by serving, promoting, and empowering member businesses. I'm not sure that loss will be so small. And to give you a twenty twenty recap. So at the beginning of twenty twenty, we thought we were headed for a really great year, had a great banquet, and then after that, bam. So what we did in those first few weeks is we tried to just help our local business community as much as possible. We maintained lists of hours at businesses, you know, because several of them either closed, they had altered hours, things like that. So we tried to maintain lists and send out all the updates about the businesses and also send out important updates about whatever state programs were going on or the guideline updates, everything. We sent those out weekly in our newsletter. We heavily promoted the importance of shopping local for months, months, and months. I feel like we, we do that a lot anyway, but we just tried to really amp it up. We did a lot of really silly Facebook Live videos. Just, you know, fun, tried to make it fun, positive, things like that. We did a lot of local business gift card giveaways. Several of them were to encourage people still supporting local businesses. So we would say, if you shop at a local business, please send us a picture or come in with your receipt, and you'll be entered to win a gift card from another local business. So we just really, really tried to facilitate supporting as much as possible. You can see that those are some of our actual promotional posts. We did partner with Winfield Chamber and Legacy to do Round the Cali, which was a matching program that Legacy did. That was really fun and that kind of encouraged some businesses that didn't offer gift cards to offer gift cards that could be purchased digitally. As things started to open up, we did start to do our cash mobs and lunch mobs. And what that is, is just us really encouraging people supporting local. In twenty twenty, the Arc City Chamber directly put at least six thousand one hundred sixty-three seventy-three back into our local economy. And we did that through the various promotions, giveaways, sponsorships, and membership events. Just an overview of everything that we're, that we are. We are a part of many community partnerships that all have a common goal of making our community the best it can be. That's, we partner with Burford, we partner with Visit Arc City. Basically, if anybody comes to us and says, hey, I've got this great idea, you know, how can you help or can you help? We, we usually are willing to take it on and just try to do whatever we can to, to help. That kind of goes along with being a community cheerleader. We volunteer for things. If somebody's out there doing something amazing, or you know, we see an organization do something positive on Facebook, we just try to share that news and try to share the really great parts about Arc City. We do serve as an information hub. We get calls daily and a lot of traffic of people just coming in and asking everything. We get asked questions. I mean, you would not even believe sometimes, but you know, that makes it kind of fun. So definitely give out daily referrals, things like that. Pretty went over that one pretty much. So our current program of work, it's more detailed in your packet, but we do offer several events each year. Christmas in the City, that's one of the big ones that really helps spread the message of keeping your money local at that time of year. That time of year really can make or break a business. So we very much just try to support our locals and really encourage that. We do administrative professionals event every year. We partnered with Visit Arc City on that one. This year, we did do that a little bit different. In hindsight, I wish we would have just had the whole luncheon because it's really fun, and I think it would have been attended because all of our events lately have been great. People are ready to get out and do things, and it's been wonderful, but very busy. So we have our annual banquet every year. This year, we're actually doing that this summer, and we'll have our awards and everything as usual, and then our annual golf tournament. Promotions, we promote, refer our businesses, have recognition awards, maintain member databases, and always encourage shopping Arc City first. We organize several luncheons throughout the year that serve as a way for the community to stay updated. We partner with Winfield on several of those. And then we try to do at least one or two, like, business workshops. Obviously, last year, those didn't really happen, and we're still trying to get all of the balls rolling. So you might expect to see some of those in the fall. And then our weekly chambers just serve as a really great networking opportunity for local businesses. It's so cool to see people who regularly attend those establish all of their different relationships and it's just cool. I feel like sometimes we're like a, I don't know, we put puzzle pieces together. And our future plans is just to continue our current program of work. Something that's in your packet is we are working on Main Street Designation, and we're just trying to build that from the ground up. And so there's a lot that goes into that. But basically, that would allow us several opportunities for grants. We, we would just have access to technical assistance, knowledge. They do a lot of workshops and trainings and things like that to teach you how to best plan for revitalization and also give you ideas for community promotions and things like that. And we are always looking to strengthen our existing and grow our community partnerships. So, and just exploring and educating ourselves on what we can do better. That's all of that. Any questions?
Thank you. I did see any of your expenses. It's been that way for years, that copy machine. That's always, when I was on the chamber, that was like one of our headaches, was trying to figure out how to. It's always, I saw it on there, I almost laughed because there's no, I mean, it's just, it's the same thing from ten years, twelve years ago, so. And we tried like four different things in four different years. No, I'm not complaining. That was not a complaint. That was almost just, it brought me back to the twelve years when we're looking at expense, saying, man, how can we get that down? And we went like four different options. I think we went back to what it was. It's, it's not, you can't. It's not cheap. Yeah, I get it. So, yeah, thanks. That was not, that was not a complaint by anybody. I just, I saw and just smiled, so. Thank you. Thanks. You're probably ready to get home and see Carson, so.
I need to have you guys get up and stretch. So I want you to notice, I'm setting my alarm for five minutes, okay?
Very few people follow their timeline. I'm just saying, you'd be one of the few to set their guidelines.
Sure. So I'm gonna start my timer. So you guys have, I think you have packets that I provided for you. We won't bring those to you. While I've been sitting here, I thought, you know, what have I done in the last month? I thought, you know, what we kind of pride ourselves in as an Arc City is being a conduit to hook up different people and to work with all the different entities. And so one of the things, our idea is I just, while I've sent it, it's through my notes. And so that's all I'm going to talk to you about, is these notes. I'm not going to talk to you about what you have in front of you. Just in the past month, working with the city, we have developed a new website. We've been working on Talkalala. We're working on a fire display for Fourth of July with Wade, also funding with these ladies. Hundred and fiftieth celebration, we put together five days of activities for that. Police department, we work with local businesses. All of that has to just work. We hosted a two-day meeting for the city manager. We had a dinner out at our house. We had food taken into the city water department. Jay gave us wine. I mean, it's just people helping people and the community just coming together and making things work. And that's the fun part of the job. We're working on a video production product, project right now with Cala First, the Burford, the city, and the chamber. Working on banners to go across the street at four big events. The first one will be for the hundred and fiftieth celebration. Also go across Summit at Fifth Avenue. I've had to work with the police department, with Tony, you know, with the lead advertising, getting those worked. Outside entities that I've worked with just in the last month, Etsanoa. Worked with Sandy very closely, the Oklahoma Free Will group that's going to be coming here in June. The Model T Touring group that contacted us. They want to come in August. And so those are some of the outside entities that are even in the community that we work with. Then inside the community, like I said, we work with Etsanoa. We are going to provide lunch every day for the people that are here for the dig from June first to June twenty-sixth. The Chamber helps co-host the administrative appreciation project with the Chamber. Rebi, we work really closely with those folks. We supported their efforts for Halfalala. We also supported the Arcalala group for Halfalala. Yesterday, we got to hear a presentation for two of our Eagle Scouts. Our Boy Scouts are working for their Eagle Scouts. We're going to get to support a project that they're doing. The Community Band, we work with them. We're helping them put together a big show during the during the hundred and fiftieth celebration. So talking really fast, that's just what we've done in the last month. So as you can see, we're busy. We always have something going on. What I love is on Tuesday, when I come into my office, I have no idea what, what's going to be happening because there's always something new that comes at the door. I know the things that happen happen. I know the things that Andrew wants me to get done. But then, you know, who knows what's going to come in the door? And so that's fun. If you look at the request on the budget, I have requested, we have seventy-five thousand that we get in transit guest tax right now. I have asked that to go to ninety next year. The three or the four areas that I raised, and I'll just highlight those really quickly. I still have one minute.
You got all the time. You're good.
You got more than that, Pam.
So first of all, I feel like this Arc City has been of an identity crisis. We're a city entity, but we're in the Chamber building. And so I'm always told, oh, you're the Chamber. Well, no, we love the Chamber, but we're not the Chamber. And so I like to keep promoting our brand, keep promoting our new logo where I go. And just so people know that Visit Arc City is an entity of its own. I want to increase radio. I want to increase, go back to the state listings. There's a state magazine, and the listings in there are expensive. And I, I quit doing those a couple of years ago. And I'd like to get back to that because that also gives us some social media access. And then social media, I'd like to increase, do some boosting of posts and stuff like that. So the advertising amount has gone up a little bit. The grants, I'd like to have a little bit more just to give people. That's basically what that is. People come to the board, they present their idea or their project or what it is that they're wanting, and then we vote on it, and we just give, give out that money. I'd like for that to go up to fourteen hundred. Last year, oh, five minutes. Last year, we gave a advertising grant. We gave Etsanoa developmental five K grant. Last round, car show, toy train show, fireworks display, and then the video for the video project that we're doing right now. We're giving money to that. So that's one of the things that we're supporting now. I have a little bit in there to, you know, when somebody comes up with a new idea that we don't know about at the first of the year, that we can go ahead and support those things throughout the year. Promotion, raise that up a little bit just so we can do more things. We are now, one of the things that we are is we're a hospitality or of the city. When groups come into the Burford, the green room, somebody has to man that, somebody has to take the food, somebody has to provide the meals. And so Visit Arc City does that. And so that kind of thing is what comes out of that promotional line as well as cups and mugs and things that we give away, all that kind of stuff. And then down on the wages, it's gone up a little bit in 2021, the first part. I kept my hours down to about 20 to 24 hours a week. And now I need to go back up to about 30 to 35 just to get everything done. So that's what I've got. I'm looking at 2021 and Jennifer Finn kind of probably backed me up on that. This, I'm looking at probably $90,000 is what we're gonna bring in. And we're bringing, we're gonna take out 75,000. So that gives us 15,000 overage that adds to the 28,000 that we already have that the city holds for us. In 2022, I'm expecting 120,000 in revenue. We take 90, that gives us 30,000 overage that's in that pot. So we're looking at 68 to 70,000 in that pot by the, in the next year, even with the increase to 90,000. So, any questions?
I know the Burford's got a big thing coming. I think it starts next year is that, that film festival that they got from Fox City. That's gonna be huge.
It's gonna be huge. And we're gonna be right up, we'll make that one.
It's been nice to see you guys brand yourself. I know when I was on the chamber, it was like Arc City convention business and CVB. And it is nice to have it branded in different kinds. Yeah, it is. It does separate yourself, if you want to be, say, separate. That's the right word, so. It's been nice to see you a little.
I know there were some pains, there were some pains to get you to where you're at. You know, you had to work through, but yeah.
I knew at the time, I knew it was gonna be worth it.
Yeah. And I thank you for your, your vision of doing that because at the time I wasn't certain, you know, if it's gonna work or not. But, but yeah, I said, I thank you for what you're doing.
Well, thank you. Thank you. I tell everybody I have the best job in the city, so. I don't like to rub it too much.
It's all, it's all entertaining.
Thanks, Pam. You're good. Thanks. We just skipped the band, but they're not here, but there's really not a whole lot on that, right? So, yeah. That's what I thought. All right. I don't make Sandy wait any longer anyway. She's been patiently and quietly sitting in the back corner.
Yeah.
Are you? One every year. Mix it up a little bit. Or tell her not to come, though. That's your put her first.
Okay, so this, these are our current board members. I submitted two documents to you. One is a sheet where you can see the budget comparison for the last four years. And then the actual PowerPoint. So last year, we did stay open for 10 months. Last year, we lost the part-time staff person right before COVID hit. So it was pretty much me until about April of this year, when we hired a part-time staff person back again. We did stay open. We continued with Etsanowa tours. We continued. We did have some foot traffic, but of course, it was down from where it came from. We worked on preservation and we continued applying for grants. A lot of people stopped applying for grants, assuming that kind of everything was going to hold. But actually, that paid off for us because we got about 50,000 in grants to make improvements in the building. Membership, our membership number still is around 1,016. That's the breakdown by percentage of how that breaks out. Compared to museums our size, that's a very good number. 2022 goals, obviously, we're gonna continue to work with Etsanowa. We're going to continue to help on the 150th anniversary. I know that's this year, but we actually have the town charter, which was signed in January of 1872. So we will, in 2022, have a little bit of celebration from that. And we plan on opening new exhibits. We plan on continuing to build the museum as a destination. Right now, we are offering cemetery tours and all kinds of tours out of the museum, which draws people into the community who want to go on those tours. And then, of course, we work with the, I want to call her the CVB. But we work with Visit Arc City to then have other activities for them to do while they're in town. So that's worked very well thus far. We have a great partnership with Pam. We'll continue, obviously, to seek out any grant funding that we can get. We do have a new Etsano Advance tour. So the way it works, I work, I work, I used to work half-time for each entity. Now it's grown and so I'm really pretty much working full-time for both entities. My salary is split down center between the two, but I am clearly stretched. And everybody who knows me knows that. So we have created some new things like the Etsano Advance tour, where you can go out and fly drones and use thermal imaging and you can use a magnet top or a metal detector. So all of those are higher value tours. And so all of the tour money is split in the middle between the two entities. It's half the museum type stuff. So that's one way of continuing to increase the revenues that we're bringing in the door through that collaboration. We do offer scouting merit badge camps. We do everything from geocaching to the archaeology badge to the NOVA awards. And that has grown over the last two years, although last year was kind of a bust on that. So I have requested 70,000, which what you gave us last year. We appreciate all the support that you've given us. We have acquired grants to make the improvements into the building. If you recall, when the museum split off from the city, probably in, I'd say, 2014, 2015, one of the agreements there was that the museum would start to make the infrastructure improvements into that building because that's one of the things the city at the time did not have the money to do. So we don't use city staff. We do it all on our own through grant funding. And so we have now replaced the electrical, working on the lighting, the plumbing's been fixed. And so the building is in much better shape than it was in the past. So we kind of kept that.
Got a new riff on it, too.
So we've made, made that commitment to continue the work and make those improvements to the building. And I think I made it five minutes. What questions, Cam?
How much revenue do you have coming through the door?
So memberships is probably around 12,000. Admissions is probably maybe another four or so. And then the Etsanowa tours, you know, the tours started being split between the museum and Etsanowa back in 2019. So all I have is 19 numbers to go off of because we didn't have a lot of that last year. But that's probably gonna be another, say, 5,000 or so.
So you split that 5,000 or is that what goes?
Our share.
Okay. And what, what do you get through grants?
Last year, we got 50,000, or this year, we got 50,000. Last year, we got 37,000. And the year before that, we got about 42,000. And all of that has gone into building improvements.
So you're 12, 16, 21, 70? Is your budget $140,000? I don't have, my, my thing was dead. I had to feed it some more electricity, so it come to life. So your budget is actually $140,000?
Are you asking what we requested or are you asking?
No, your total budget.
So what it costs to run the place or? Because the capital improvements are kind of a little bit on both sides. It takes about 100,000 to run it in a year without capital improvements.
And you get those capital improvements from whom?
We've gotten from the National Endowment for the Humanities. We've gotten from Wilkins Grant. So various grant agencies. And normally, that's a match, so they pay half and we pay half.
Okay.
Anything else I can answer for? I made five minutes.
We could go first if you.
Yeah. Remember Andrew. Well, I know Andrew's got another meeting in here, so I don't have a whole lot. The agenda's pretty straightforward. There's nothing really crazy on that, Jennifer. I don't think you have any, do you guys have anything, Josh? Randy said if you have any questions, give him a call or talk to him Monday. He said he'll be around, but it's, the agenda looks.
Doc, you'll be around to help us out with that. At this point.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Thanks. Meeting's adjourned unless you don't want to hang out.
No.